Regular board meeting to order. Again, this is the regular meeting for the Silver Consolidated School District. It's October 17th, 2017. If everyone will join us, or actually, before I get to that, welcome. And if Mr. Hernandez, you could do a roll call for us?
Time is not...
It is 6:12.
Yes, sir. Mr. McMillan?
Here.
Mrs. Vasquez?
Here.
Mrs. Montenegro?
Here.
Mr. Khan?
Here.
Mr. Weiss?
Here.
Thank you. And again, welcome, everyone, board members, administration, guests. If you all now join me with standing, the Pledge of Allegiance, and then a salute to the New Mexico flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the zealous symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures.
Thank you. First on our agenda tonight is to review and approve approval of minutes. And we have September 19th, 2017 work session and the September 19th, 2017 regular meeting. If everybody's had a chance to review those in your packet, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the minutes of September 19th, 2017 work session and regular meeting as presented.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes. Next on our agenda is a consideration and approval of the agenda.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Got a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
On A3, will we still be having someone to present for SCEA today?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Just wanted to confirm that. Thank you.
Also, I believe, under information to the board, Mr. Barry Ward is not here today.
That's correct.
And so, just, I guess FYI, he's not, he's not here, so we won't be having that update. I don't think we need to change anything, but just as a matter of information.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Seeing none, that passes. Next on our agenda is information and presentations, non-action items. And first up is the New Youth Basketball League. Ms. Jenny Coleman.
Alicia Beck came to join me. I just really appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you.
Want to just introduce you to the concept that we're doing and see if you guys have questions or ideas for us.
Thank you.
So, the past few years, you probably know, Chad Geary and Derry Bly have run a basketball league in town, donated tons of their time. They're both pretty burnt out, and word was circulating through the community that they plan to kind of not do it this year. So, a group of us have gotten together. Alicia Beck and her husband, John, and I, a couple of years ago, chose to take our kids out of the league and do kind of a non-traditional clinics instead of the competitive games. We loved that, but we also found it was missing, the competitive games. There's something to be said for that. So, this year, we kind of, a group of us have gotten together. We've met a couple of weeks in a row. We want to bring those two philosophies together. On the backside of the Chapinacy, the concept would be in January, we would do a series of clinics, and then the league would get sorted into teams for competition in February, March, April. That would be the idea. We want to turn Youth Basketball League, and I know Board Member Montenegro knows a ton about AYSO Soccer. That's really the entity we want to model ourselves after. Alicia and John have been involved in that for years. My son has participated in that. I know a lot of your kiddos play in that league. That's a league that gives our children insurance when they play, so there's some liability coverage there, some risk coverage there. Does background screenings of coaches and volunteers, which we've never had in youth basketball, and it's a nonprofit. So, nobody is funneling $4,000 into their own bank account. That money is staying for the kids of the community. So, we really want to piggyback on that philosophy and model ourselves after that. It'll be a board, same idea. We're going to get registered as a nonprofit. There is insurance that you can get for youth basketball. We have to work out those details because it's complicated. It doesn't exist in the same type of format that it does for soccer. Unfortunately, youth basketball, I don't know, it's, it's less organized. It's just not a centralized body, the way soccer is and the way baseball is. So, we do have some kinks to work out. We just really wanted the school board to be aware we're doing it, so that maybe at some point, if you have ideas or experience, you would donate those to the group. If you can be an advocate for us for facility access, that is one of the concerns we have. I don't know if you know that I'm Jenny Coleman, of course. I should have introduced myself. I know Mike already did, but my husband is Mark Coleman from the university, has 29 years of experience, D1, D2, and D3 coaching. He's coached five NBA players, six NBA players. We have buy-in from Jake Martinez, from Tyson Castillo, from, I don't know Ray's last name, but Ray, who's the coach at Cobra. We have all the coaches kind of really excited about this, creating a feeder program for their high school and junior high school teams eventually, in a way that hasn't existed in the past. So, Chad Geary has been supportive of this. I haven't had a chance to talk to Derry, but he is in the loop. So, we have even the people who have passed this on saying, hey, it can always be better. So, we want to take what they did and build from there, not, not reinvent the wheel, but make it better. Because of working at Western, I have access, so the IM Gym, we already have that pretty much reserved for like three months, two hours a day, five days a week. We have that space for clinics in January, but we very well may need access to some of this public school space as well, because courts are limited. Unlike baseball and soccer, basketball is a limited resource in Silver City. There aren't as many, how many schools do we have that don't even have courts? So, it's not ideal for kids to play outside on concrete. That's not good for their bodies even. Mike, you can speak to that. That surface is a lot less forgiving on the human body than a hardwood court. So, I did put some suggestions down for, you know, maybe you can help us with access to facilities or advocating for us when the time comes. Maybe if you have expertise, you'd be willing to volunteer. I know Ashley's name was mentioned multiple times at meetings to get her roped in for the financial side of things. So, but, you know, we feel bad taxing you because you already do so much. So, if you have other people, or if you have time, we would really welcome as much participation as possible. And we can answer any questions?
Yeah, we just want to be a community thing, so if you want to work out, input out, and just such a Miller, want to do something for the kids and for the community to help them, to help them become the players they can be, or just learn the sport.
Questions from the... Actually, in a better way. Much obliged.
Questions from the board?
Mr. President, I congratulate you for doing this, because it takes a lot of time and energy and resources for anybody to do something, especially on this scale, so I congratulate you. I think about the only thing we probably all have to do is go look at board policy and look at the use of facilities to re-familiarize ourselves with what's expected and that sort of stuff. But I congratulate you, and thank you very much for doing this for youth. Appreciate it.
If you know people who would like to serve on the board, I personally don't want to be a board member. I want to contribute, I want to...
She's done all the work so far. All the headwork.
But I think we need different opinions. I think the board should have people on it like you guys, who don't know each other. It can't, I don't want to see this have biases and blinders, the way we see other entities function. So, bringing a random person forward and saying, this person who no one knows would be a good contributor. People from, we've talked about that, people from Silver City, not from Silver City. I've been here 14 years, but I still don't see myself as from Silver City, and I think that brings value to the conversation at times. But so do the people who've been here forever, who bring that incredibly valuable perspective. So, everybody's input would be welcome here.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, just to clarify, I remember you and I had this conversation maybe three, four years ago, to see if there was an AYSO-type organization for basketball, and I'm going to assume that there is not such a thing.
Well, there are. So, some of them, there's NYB, it's like New York basketball, but they exist everywhere. Some of those, even AAU, that's a $200 per kid registration.
Yes, it is.
And we don't want to be that competitive. We really want to be a skill development.
It is. Right.
We want that league there.
Yes, absolutely.
We want people to know that it's there and to let kids do that.
Right.
But this type of league is not A. This is a community league where not, no travel. It's to learn the sport.
Yeah.
And so, YMCA does have a very wonderfully structured youth basketball program, but you have to have a Y in your, in your territory, and we're just...
Wow.
So, you actually can go through insurance agencies and get youth sport insurance packages. And they're, depending on how big the league is, they range from like six bucks a kid up to $16 a kid.
Okay.
Again, if we're not operating this as a for-profit, we can afford that. We can take the money that the kids contribute and try to get all of that back in insurance.
Right.
The thing that's always bothered me, having a kid who's, you know, athletic and active, is if he blows out his knee at the age of 10 playing basketball, we're lucky that we have insurance and we can deal with that situation, but there are a lot of families in Grant County for whom that wouldn't be true.
Yeah.
It would be nice to come together as a community and make sure we have that assurance, that if a kid were to get injured, and we've been playing at that annex before it had a new court, and that was like an ice skating rink. I'm not sure if we were playing hockey or basketball. Maybe a new sport. Silver City can invent a new sport, so.
Yeah.
It's a, I mean, honestly, Ashley, if you're interested, it's a little bit of an uphill climb here.
You never know. You might be thinking of a new AYSO for basketball.
There you go. I do have free legal counsel on this, so Curtis Hayes, if any of you know him from the university, he's now based out of Gallup, but he's now the Gallup County, Gallup City Attorney. So, he's back in practice. So, he donated his time. He's helping us get established and do everything. One of the women who's been coming to meetings happens to work for an insurance agent, so that's really valuable expertise.
Good.
Any other questions? Well, I would, I would also congratulate you and wish you the best of luck, because anytime that we can have an activity for our youth outside of school, I think it's a positive activity. It's, it's a good thing to do. And as Ms. Vasquez mentioned, and I think we're looking at it later in our, in our agenda, there is a policy that addresses the use of facilities, and, and it's getting that little bit more complex now with the concussion law, and I think that's what we'll be looking at later, is, is any of the youth sports now that use the facility have to agree that all of the kids and the coaches have concussion training, so that's something else to just be aware of, that I think is, is going to be required for all the youth groups now.
That's great.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is the Silver High School Senior Field Trip. Mr. Minus.
Thank you. Thank you. How are you guys doing today?
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Good, how are you?
Thank you.
Mrs. McMillan didn't want to come?
No, she did not.
Thank you.
I do have to apologize, first off. I think that there was a little bit of miscommunication. The reason I'm coming before the board is to discuss the senior year trip for the students. I did not know if it was going to be an action item or a non-action item. I will go ahead and present to you guys what I have in mind, and we can decide on that. The first thing is, I am a senior sponsor, one of the individuals in charge of it, as well as with Mrs. McMillan. One of the things that we want to do a little bit differently this year is we want to take the kids on a farther adventure. Some of the students, after speaking with seniors, a lot of them do not get outside of our community. So, anytime that they are able to get outside of the community is something to beneficial for them. One of the things that we had our seniors vote on were certain locations that they would like to go to, and one of them that was brought up was Disneyland. I know that that seems like a far adventure for students to go on to, but it is feasible for students to be on to. One of the things I've been doing is talking with Disneyland, talking with the hotels, talking also with the charter bus company, and figuring out the costs. With this next paper I'm going to pass out, it has those costs that are presented onto it, and again, these are estimated. Well, one of the things that we are running into as a trouble is that we cannot officially begin fundraising without understanding if we're approved for an overnight trip. So, if you were to take a look at our parent senior trip student agreement, this would be something that we drafted up, and again, this, I'm asking for any feedback, or if you have any questions at all. But with this student, senior parent trip agreement, is students and the parents, as well as administration, would understand that this is a code of conduct contract. I understand that in the past, there have been certain instances where students do get out of hand. This is their binding towards it. It breaks down what is, what makes a student eligible. Students have to have a 2.0 GPA. They cannot have two Fs for the third and second or third nine weeks. The reason why I cannot put the first is because we were unfortunately unable to get to the board before then, and then the trip transpires before the end of the third nine weeks. The next one would be is the seven unexcused absences. That's a school, that's a school district policy. So, we thought that we would make sure that kids are making sure that they get to school. We also want to make sure that students must meet all requirements for graduation. Certain students, seniors are not going to be able to meet the requirements, so we want to make sure that they push themselves, and this is not a privilege. Students have to earn this. And the parents and student have to send this code of conduct. So, I went ahead and broke down, me and Mrs. McMillan also worked with our administration, Mr. Coker, and we went ahead and put certain things on there that we felt were common sense, but at the same time, they have to be explained out. Zero tolerance for any alcohol, tobacco, or drugs. Zero tolerance for students leaving the group, leaving the hotel, or traveling places. There will be a zero tolerance for students caught in inappropriate and disrespectful actions, such as PDA, violation of any laws, including destruction of property and/or theft. And there will be a zero tolerance for students disobeying curfew. Now, understand that this is a draft portion. Depending on whether the board were to go ahead and grant us to be able to go outside, outside of our community for a night or two to Disneyland, Anaheim, California, then we would go ahead and amend this. But this is something that I'm putting forth for all seniors. Whether we go to Anaheim, California or not, I want to make sure that no students think that they can go ahead and go on to this trip and think that it's a free time to go ahead and drink, you know, do tobacco, or even drugs, because it puts others in harmful way. The next thing that we go ahead and come down to is, what happens if they do go ahead and disobey this? Well, if a violation occurs, local authorities will be contacted, and Silver Consolidated Schools is no longer liable or responsible for the transportation care for your child. They will go ahead and be handed over to the proper authorities. We will go ahead and, let's say, a student is caught drinking, we will go ahead and contact authorities, and authorities will go ahead and place that child into their custody. The next thing is, the parent has to go ahead and pick up their child. So, we're not going to go ahead and let kids say, hey, go ahead and mess up, you get to have a ride back with us. Parents understand that you have to take responsibility to make sure your child does not mess up. Next thing is, students will not be allowed to participate in graduation exercises. They will not be able to walk. And the last thing is, they will be subjected to suspension or expulsion. So, these, it comes forth a little bit blunt, but at the same time, I believe that it makes sure that kids do not mess around. We're going to have fun. We're going for them to have a great experience. One of the things with contacting Disneyland is the date that we have projected, which is March 28th, is that is a youth day. So, they shut down the park for just the youth. So, it becomes an educational time for them as well. They have it a lot more themed towards, and geared towards the students. I personally believe that this is something great for some of the kids to experience. Fortunately, some kids will not leave this community. This is a great way for them to work and earn their way towards it, as well as them to experience something that a lot of other kids within this community do not get to experience. By having this, it has other students with grade levels before them to look something, you know, look forward to something. My biggest thing is making sure that the kids earn their way. Each student has broken down the projected estimation costs. I can't move forward unless I know whether or not we can do an overnight or not. But I have broken down, if we were able to go, the estimated costs. If students, and the, the next question would be, what happens if a kid cannot come up with $300 or $350? They would be, have to turn in that money by the end of February. So, if you break it down by each week, it's $20 a week they would need to do. With the given months, that gives us four months, starting from November. So, there, it gives them time. If they ultimately, they come from a low-income family, one of the ways that we have proposed is for them to do fundraising. One of the things that we got approved to do is painting of the parking lots. So, students would have to sell at least six parking lot spaces at a certain cost that we have in order to fundraise for their park. This, to me, is a great way for kids to get out into the community, and they have to earn their way to go on to a senior year trip. It's not just something that has been handed to them, and something different for them. Understand that makes everyone a little bit nervous with overnight trips. For every student, or for every 10 students, we will have that one chaperone. We will make sure there's an extra four seats that are allotted on the bus, because we can take up to 114 people. If we take 100 students, we take 14 chaperones. I want to make sure that we're above and beyond prepared for anything. Any students break this, this is where we can lean back on to making sure and letting parents know, hey, this has been signed, it's been approved by the administrator and by you, the student. If you break it, this is what you're subjected to. This was not in place last year, and I kind of wish that it had been in place last year. Something like this, we'll make sure to put students, you know, in their place not to mess up, as well as for parents to step up and say, guys, don't, don't mess up on this trip. It's something for you. This is a great way to go out, your high school community, or your high school career, and have a great time at a location such as Disneyland.
Is there any questions?
And before I, we open it up for questions, I want to say that I'm obviously conflicted on this, and, and want to explain to everybody what, how this came to be. We, we had our agenda meeting last week, and I noticed, you know, information to the board, so I go home and I say, oh, Ms. McMillan, I see you're on the information to the board for the agenda, and she says, that's right, we need to get our field trip approved. And I said, well, the board, it's under information, so it's not an action item. It won't, we'll listen to you, but we're not taking action on it. And she said, well, we need the board to approve a field trip. It's overnight. And so, then I had contacted Mr. Brown. I said, I think the senior trip is wanting us to take action on this, and then we need to add it as an action item in addition to information to the board, so that's where I think that, that's how that came to be. And then she told me what you all were, were planning and what the kids wanted to do. I mean, last year, they, and I said, yeah, so you guys are going to Tucson, or doing two days in Tucson? No, they want to go to Disneyland. And so, I think you're right, that's, I think it's some, an excellent opportunity for some kids that otherwise wouldn't have the opportunity to take advantage of, and, and so I commend you for that, but I think you're also a little bit daring, I guess, in, in this adventure and challenging, looking at the, the fundraising and the timelines that we're looking at. But back to the kind of the policy, and I, and I was, looked at the policy, and I think it says something like, the board approves any field trips that are out of state. And, and because I've thought, I was like, well, the board, I mean, there's been teams that go out of state, there's been the senior trip that went to Tucson, that's out of state. The board has never approved these type of activities before. And I thought, well, is it just determined field trip? If it's a sporting event, I guess maybe that's, would be something considered different that doesn't need approval. Is this more of a, I guess, classified as a field trip? So, that's, I guess, a question for maybe further discussion or... But anyway, that's how, that's how it came to be as far as an action item, and I'll open it up for questions from the rest of the board, and Mr. Brown?
Do you have questions?
Ms. Vasquez?
Thank you. Mr. Minus, you say, you know, you're estimating 100 students maximum because of what the bus can carry and 14 adults. Would the 14 adults pay their own way?
Yes, ma'am.
And then you mentioned that one of your, like, considerations is you want to be able to offer it to students who may not normally go there with family, or something like that. And did, was there any discussion at all if perhaps a student was homeless, and how this would, how the requirements of McKinney-Vento would be adhered to? Because it talks about some of the...
The requirements of what?
The requirements that about, they wouldn't be able to graduate, and there were some of the consequences of something. Would that be, is that adhered to McKinney-Vento?
So...
What your rules are? Your consequences?
What that means as far as being able to meet all the requirements, if a student's not on track to graduate for this school year for May, because we're trying to make sure that the students that are on track to graduate in May, that they are allotted this. That is something that me and Mr. Coker have discussed. Well, if a student has to make up credits, you know, at the end of the year, or during the summer, does that really mean that they're graduating, or they're not graduating? Because that means that they'll graduate in December. That is why we went ahead and put it towards May. Some of those students have not been able to fulfill the two Fs, or the, you know, they, they will not fall within graduation, because they have those two Fs, or they have those unexcused absences, where they do not attend school at all, and then they try making it up at the end of the year. As far as students that are homeless, we do offer the ways of, alternative means of allocating the monetary funds, but such as fundraising with us. So far, we've raised $1,800 in just four fundraisers. And so, we haven't pushed with the big fundraisers as, as we can yet, because we wanted to see if, what our goal was, whether it be Disneyland, how much we need to fundraise. The kids are mainly asking, why are we going to fundraise if we don't know where we're going yet? So, that's where we're at with this.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have any more questions? Okay, now. Is this legal to do?
Now, that is where I was going to ask for your guys' advice.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I think we should send it to our attorney, just to make sure. Do you know if it's legal to do this?
Absolutely.
It is? Okay. Just, it just blows my mind that it wasn't in place for prior years. Do you know what I mean?
Yes, ma'am. No, I, it, it kind of struck me a little bit.
It's crazy to me.
And, and every sponsor that I've worked with, they're looking at this, and they're saying, well, where's the one from last year?
There isn't.
And, well, I think what ends up happening is, we change sponsors. You know, so with the changing of sponsors, I think each year it changes a little bit, but I just wanted to make sure, before I came, before the board, that we had something in place. And this is going to be whether we do go to Disneyland or not.
Good.
I'm ready for either way, but no matter what, if these students are going to get onto a bus, and they're going to go on a field trip with us, just as an athlete has to do, or whenever they sign up for the school year, they have to sign their handbook. You know, it's their code of conduct, and that's why I threw onto there that they have to, and they are subjected to school policy as well.
Right. Okay. And just, so again, referencing last year, and my daughter would kill me if I was bringing this up, but, you know, we went through the whole thing, and then so-and-so said they did it, and so-and-so said they didn't do it, and the investigation was just almost non-conclusive. And so, if something like this happens in California, and let's say someone does, will you have a process in place to where you can whittle it down right to someone, and you don't have to wait for so-and-so to say that she did it, or so on and so forth?
I believe that... I believe that and then that's one of my concerns as well. Uh, the bringing in of the proper authorities. And going ahead and getting that help because no matter where we travel to, whether it's Tucson or Phoenix, that same thing becomes a problem. And that's where I went ahead and threw on there for the authorities to come in and step in. They would supersede us and those kids would go ahead and be within their custody and the police would have their own.
So they could test them for alcohol or whatever.
They are within their custody now. Granted, police have their procedures. This is us turning uh them over to them. That's why I went ahead and put on there that the parents now have to go ahead and go over there, make their own travel arrangements to go ahead and pick their child up. Even if let's say we were to go a field trip to Deming, this same thing I would want in place and we just hand over to the to the authorities. I understand what happened last year. And maybe if something like this had been in place, that would not have happened where there was just so much confusion and the investigation, as you said, just became very.
Harry.
Yes.
Um, and just to clarify, you guys are gonna do charter buses, so it wouldn't be any school, we wouldn't, it wouldn't be any school transportation?
Yes, ma'am. The charter bus would. I at first I had thought that they were gonna pick us up here from Tucson. But actually, after speaking to the person, they would pick us up here in Silver City.
Okay.
So that's why the the cost is a little bit inflated, but it also saves the district from having to spend money on the buses. It's a dollar twenty-five one-way or for per mile. So for us to go from here to Phoenix, it's eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. The reason I know this per bus is I was trying to figure it out for for another uh trip. But uh and that's just one bus. So we go ahead and we save up a little bit of money and we go ahead and have the charter bus. Whenever we pass through the border patrol check, because I don't know what the situation is of us uh checking bags. Whenever we do go through the border patrol check, that is one thing that we could say, hey, you guys can go ahead and check the bus. You know, run the dogs on the bottom. If they get a hit, that student is pull over right there and we go ahead and solve that problem. The district doesn't have to worry about, are we in violation of checking bags, not checking bags? We go ahead and rely on that because we do hit two checkpoints along the way.
So that's the difference between proposal A and proposal B is proposal B is picking up in Silver City, is that?
No, sir. That's the the two-day park hopper. I apologize. Uh, it was where me and Mrs. McMillan were discussing where some students had discussed to us want to do the two park hopper, the within that one day they could uh go to Disneyland and then there's a park right across from it. They're interconnected. That's what makes the difference a little bit from a hundred and twelve dollars to a hundred and fifty-six dollars, I believe that is uh listed on there.
Okay.
And I've been in contact with Disneyland and none of the prices are subject to change. There's no tax or anything and I went ahead and rounded it up to the nearest thousand. That way we had a little bit of safety cushion as far as price.
I wanna commend uh Mrs. McMillan and yourself for doing this for the senior class. Um, I myself having my senior year, you know, I got to attend a couple of out-of-town trips, which was significantly impacted my life. Because I got to see different parts other than Grant County. And and with this co- um code of conduct, you know, it it does seem to um make the student responsible for their their action as well as their character. Um, so you guys can have a good trip. I'm going, uh, my comment so at the football games and you guys are doing the, is that for the field trip or is it just for the senior class itself?
Uh, the cooking of the hamburgers that everyone loves smelling and sometimes we accidentally smoke out the the stands. That is for it. So those, the concession stand itself is for junior class for prom, but us cooking the hamburgers. The great thing with that is the kids have taken the initiative to donate those items, the parents and the students. So we make all the profit. We don't have to give any of it away and it goes directly towards.
So basically, if there's a a student that is in need of funds, that's there for 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 backup. That's great. So as long as there's a goal, I I believe any student will will make it possible if they wanna make it possible uh for this trip to work.
See, if we were to get this approved, we would have the signup sheet. And let's say a parent were to come up to us and say, look, I don't want my kid to fundraise. I have three hundred and fifty dollars. Here's three hundred and fifty dollars. So they go ahead and pay. They've reserved their spot. So it helps us to eliminate what students are not able to fundraise for themselves and what students are. My um deadline for payments and they can set up a payment plan. Uh, they can go to the school and drop off as long as I make the either three hundred depending and I went ahead and broke it down whether it's eighty students or whether it's a hundred students. Cause we've never had a senior trip that's less than a hundred students, but I wanna prepare for anything. They can go ahead and pay upfront. We can go ahead and start seeing what students are gonna be able to make it or not. Um, if it comes to uh that we have, let's say, ten students that are unable to do it, then we go ahead and say, hey, you guys can make that trip by fundraising. But my problem is that I need to know whether we shoot for shoot far and be daring or whether we do another trip. But either way, I think this is something that can be passed on for next year as well and for the years to come. That way we don't get into such hairy situations.
And and starting something now, um, the junior class currently at Cobra has been fundraising for at least a full year to go to Hawaii after their senior year. And um it's just if it's something that we wanna do for our kids and we want kids to have something to look forward to their senior year, someone's gotta start it. Someone's gotta be that Viking and, you know, plow the way. Um, and then other kids will follow. And so I think it's um very commendable that you and Mrs. McMillan, I was like, when Tristan told me, I was like, really? Is that right? Um, and I had my doubts, but you you guys will make it happen. Um, the other thing that I just wanna mention to the board, the how what he's talking about. For those kids that need to fundraise the money, they need to show up to the fundraisers.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's something that you're having a hard time doing. You're having a hard time getting a lot of people, a lot of involvement in in the fundraisers. And so once they sign up and he says, okay, you owe me three hundred dollars, that means you know, you better show up to the next ten fundraisers so that I can allocate you your part of the fundraising, then that's gonna hold them accountable. Right now, you know, probably you're seeing most of your volunteers, you know, they're there because they're student council members or you know, the few that are being involved just because they wanna be involved. But once you have a commitment from them, then you can hold them to showing up to fundraisers if they wanna fill their account.
No, absolutely. And this this isn't the first time uh there's a previous band teacher prior to he comes to console uh Silver Consolidated Schools and he used to take the kids to Disneyland. And that was something that all those kids looked forward to. Unfortunately, along the years, it got lost. So I think this would be something fresh, new, and again, get those kids motivated to, one, get their grades up, which they should already wanna do on their own. But get their grades up, something to look forward to prior to them graduating on May eighteenth. And they go ahead and have, go out with the bank. I mean, I wish I could have done something like that. I mean, it's 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 something amazing for them.
I think the last thing that we talked about was liability. Do you see any liability issues arising at all from this? I'm asking you, Mr. Brown.
What I would like to say is I definitely commend you all for you're willing to do this for the kids and giving them the opportunity for input as to where they would like to go. That's that's fantastic. I would like to clarify to the board and members in the community that it is absolutely legal to have a student agreement and code of conduct expectations for the participants. Now, the specifics, that is definitely something we'd have to send to the attorney so that they would have the opportunity to say this is good, this is bad, it's all good, whatever the case might be. But definitely, we need to have some kind of agreement, code of conduct in place.
And beyond that, no other liability you would see?
That would be up to the attorney. Once we have something like this, I believe that would be sufficient to cover everything. And if not, they would be able to give us recommendations.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Minus, exactly how many hours would the students be gone from Silver City? Like, what day do you leave? What day you come back?
So we would leave uh March twenty-seventh and we would leave at six AM. We would arrive, because it is a twelve to thirteen hour, depending on traffic. Uh, we would arrive in Anaheim, California that afternoon, uh, let's say six PM. We'd go ahead and stay the night at the uh hotel that it's called the Good Neighbor Hotel. That's why I put it on there. And it's one of the selected hotels that they do have for us. Uh, we would stay the night there. We would be at Disneyland that following day from nine AM to five PM. We would go ahead and go back to the hotel, stay then uh stay the night there and then wake back up at six AM. Get back into Silver City at six PM. Now, here's the awesome thing. Students, yes, would be missing three days of school and that would transpire on a Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday. We would not have to worry about students missing school on the Friday, because it's Good Friday. So that is why we planned it out like that. If the board liked us to make it a little bit shorter, possibly where we went ahead and left the twenty-eighth and came back the twenty-ninth, right after Disneyland, we could and we are uh willing to do that. But having that Good Friday, they have the all that holiday to recuperate, get ready for the next week. We don't have students, you know, not showing up the next day because of a long travel. Because they do have that Good Friday holiday and they can spend it with their families as well as have a great adventure to tell their families, you know, what they were able to experience.
And those would be excused absences?
That would be uh determined up to the board if that is okay, because that would be considered a field trip.
And then um is there seniors don't have testing or anything like that that falls in those months?
During the time, they do not. As far as I've looked now, that is subject to change. We sometimes get testing thrown at us uh at the school last minute.
But not like park test. Seniors don't do park, right?
I do not believe that they have it at that time. And seniors, unless they haven't passed their, uh, it starts with an N.
The Mexico standards.
Yes, ma'am. There's, if they haven't passed that, then they will not be able to graduate. So they they forfeit their right to be able to go to or on a field trip. Yes, sir.
Um, so is our meals gonna be on this on their own? So when they're at the park?
They will be on their own, but me and Ms. McMillan have talked that if we do have a chance to fundraise even more than we are projected to, and let's say we uh have that, then we will find a way to go ahead and help students out with meals as well. That is something that we're both looking at and we would ask for input from the board.
And you might even consider looking at the meal ticket that comes with the Disney package. It may be worth it. It might not be worth it.
See, and that's where the proposal B comes into play. Because that allot's for a little bit of extra cushion space. It jumps it from thirty-two to thirty-six. But within that four grand, you could go ahead and feed every single student. So if we did do proposal B, that is where I could go ahead and help out with that.
And then just get a hotel that serves breakfast.
Oh, yes. Yes, yes, I'm ready. Just about that. Every hotel I've I've talked to from Disneyland, do you serve breakfast? There's already two of them that I've stated yes, so that helps a lot. Tell the kids eat up.
Yes. Thank you.
Other questions from the board, administration?
My question would be, would this be tabled matter for right now until we can get the lawyer to go ahead and uh look at the senior trip, parents, student agreement?
I would say it could probably get um one either tabled or approved pending approval of a
It, yeah, it seems to me that we can approve it up to the point that they can move forward and then it's really just the if there needs to be edits to to that. Code of, yeah, conduct contract, that can be changed.
That's, that would be my thought that it could probably be approved pending those contingencies.
Yes, sir. Okay. All right then. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very well, next on our agenda is the SCEA and I know um Ms. Bustillos is not here. And she did email the board out um some information yesterday. But we do have a presenter from the SCEA with us. Our representative.
Good evening, members of the board, uh President McMillan and Superintendent Brown. Uh, my name is, is that okay? Okay. Uh, my name is Steve Cianus and I'm the NEA New Mexico Unicef. Uh, serving the Southwest region, uh, which includes uh NEA locals in Silver City, Lorchburg, Deming and Las Cruces. Um, it's an honor for me to be here today and I look forward to meeting uh with all um on a personal basis. Um, tonight, I would like to share with you briefly what the mission of the NEA and what our members strive to do. And it's pretty simple, um, but yet extremely important to all the children um in our public schools. Our NEA members work uh passionately to build the quality public schools all of our children deserve. And as we work to accomplish this mission, uh, we understand that we can't do it alone. Uh, collaboration and partnerships are key. Um, and the NEA understands that without the collective collective effort of all uh s- school leadership and administration, parents, students and all school employees, um accomplishing the mission of quality public schools for all children is a daunting and perhaps even a impossible task. And I'm sure the the board and the superintendent believe the same. And as partners with server consolidated schools, I would like to assure the board and administration that SCEA values our partnerships and values the importance of reaching agreements through the collective bargaining process. And although sometimes messy, just like our democracy, the collective bargaining process works because it guarantees voice and participation in the shared decision-making process. And it works because there's a sincere effort to reach resolutions to some very, very difficult issues. In this collective bargaining process, we approach these issues head-on instead of tiptoeing around them. And it works because there is communication and willingness to build quality public schools. Again, that all our children deserve. But today, I would like to say on behalf of Katrina Bustillos, our president for the local here in Silver, that we are a bit concerned with one of the items on tonight's agenda. And that item is uh under executive session. And we ask respectfully that the board consider their decision in hiring an attorney to work towards reaching resolutions between SCEA and the district. I think the type of relationships that we have right now are conducive, very friendly. And I think that there is no need to spend money on an attorney that would perhaps not necessarily benefit, but perhaps would to a degree uh hinder the collective bargaining process. So with that said, um, I appreciate the opportunity to speak today in front of you and I hope you consider our request. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is information to the board. And as I mentioned earlier, under number one, Mr. Ward is not here for the update on the construction manager at RISK. So we'll move to number two superintendent. Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. You'll notice the first item on two A is this First Savings Bank debit card program that we have discussed or been presented the last couple of board meetings. The district has entered into the agreement with them and we are in the process of the uh school selecting the cards that are going to be specifically for their individual schools.
And Mr. Brown, if I may interrupt, um, something that we're gonna try for, at least for all these policies is instead of printing all those out as I mentioned to the board, um, we're gonna see if we can put them up on the projector and just review them from the um, we're gonna see if we can put them up on the projector and just review them from the projector. That way, we have an opportunity to see them without, uh, uh, an inch worth of, of document copies for each of us to have. And then also the, the folks in the, um, audience can also see those policies as we, as we take them through their first reading. So we'll see how this, how this works out. Can everybody see that?
Can you see it? I can see it, but even with my driving glasses, they're... Okay, the dark is better now. Okay, that's larger, that's larger. Thank you.
Hmm, I think we're ready. Any, was there any questions on that first item, uh, the bank savings card? Okay, we're ready.
Mr. President, members of the board, community members. Item two B, the first reading for policy advisory number one twenty-eight. School District Annual Accountability Report. Policy CM was modified to conform with HB, House Bill four-five-three, and changes made to twenty-two dash two C dash one-one, NMSA, New Mexico statutes annotated. Regarding Assessment and Accountability System Reporting Requirements. CM is changed specifically to indicate that the annual accountability report shall be published at least once each school year in a newspaper of general circulation in the county where the district is located, as well as on the school website. Previously, the district had a choice as to whether to publish in a newspaper, and the newer requirement is that the report be published on the district website as well. Additionally, the bill, while mainly directed at the Public Education Department, included a requirement directed at school boards that the report include the names of those members of the local school board who failed to attend annual mandatory training per two-two dash five dash one-three, NMSA. Reference part D and E of twenty-two dash two C dash eleven. NMSA is revised by HB four-five-three for the relevant changes to policy CM.
Questions?
Is that the report card that's published in the newspaper? Is that what that is?
So the change is to add, to edit to the website and then also include, um, member, uh, names of the Board of Education? If I understand that correctly?
Fail. The fail to attend annual meeting.
Oh, the fail to make the, uh, mandatory training of five hours, I think.
Thank you. Public shaming. Thank you.
That's enough for me.
We all got ours.
Yeah.
By the hair of Jenny Chan Chan.
I think so. If, is this okay for the board, if we'll just continue on? And, and does the board want Mr. Brown to read the entire policies? Or just summarize what the change is to the policies, uh?
Or the board read them themselves, so I can save my voice.
I was gonna say, we're gonna, one of us is gonna lose our voice if...
I mean, just to summarize just the changes, and we can read them.
Sounds good to me.
Okay. Regarding Policy Advisory one twenty-nine, D I E R audits slash financial monitoring. The change in regulation should be a simple reminder of the need to establish procurement procedures to accomplish the audit. There is no supporting legislation or information to reference. If you have questions, please contact your auditor or the Public Education Department.
Questions or comments from the board? It, it raised the, uh, it also raised that, uh, federal financial assistance has been raised from five hundred thousand to seven hundred and fifty thousand. And, um, Ms. Mylum and Ms. McCain, if you've got any input as well, or, uh, during any of these policies, please feel free to speak up. All right, ready to move on?
Hmm.
Thank you.
Regarding Policy Advisory one thirty, ECAC vandalism. The statute was repealed in section four of House Bill four-five-three, and the remainder of the policy ECAC is still in effect. Let me see. Also repealed in section four of House Bill four fifty-three was a requirement to report annually at a time specified by the Public Education Department, or the PED. The purchase of instructional materials per twenty-two dash one-five dash one-two, NMSA. There was no policy associated with this annual requirement since the time a format were to be determined by the PED.
Questions from the board, comments?
Repealed means taken away, so that's no longer there. Is that right?
That's the understanding.
That's what I understand. Other questions? Policy Advisory one-three-one?
EEAA walkers and riders. The change to the sentence regarding transportation to the school of origin of homeless and foster children was made pursuant to the combined effect of implementation of HB three-zero-one, SB, which is Senate Bill two-one-three, and HB four-one-one. Other policies will be affected by these legislative actions as well. Then the change to paragraph two of policy EEAA, and for the community EEAA, for example, that is specific to the School Board Association structure of how they have the policies laid out. So the change to paragraph two of policy EEAA was made to implement the changes made to twenty-two dash one-six dash four, NMSA, by SB three-eighty-one in the two thousand seventeen regular legislative session. The change allows the district to transport certain students to and from school by an alternative means of transportation other than buses under specific circumstances. The type of vehicle is specifically designated. The students are identified by distance to their residence, and the vehicle is to be driven by a certified activity driver. Rules for the safety of the students are to be formulated and published by the Public Education Department. The changes in the policy outline this new option for alternative transportation of some students to and from school, as indicated in section D of SB three-eighty-one.
Questions, comments, Ms. Fuskas?
Yeah. Mr. Brown, is this addressing special education students who have to require a special program that's not at every campus?
I believe that it is including that, but I don't believe that it's specific just to the students in need of special education. So I believe that it's talking about any, for example, there are times whenever students, um, we have the opportunity to transport students in suburbans, that's what it would be referring to as well.
What would be a circumstance when that would happen? Because then they have to be a licensed bus driver also, is that correct, activity driver?
That's correct.
So it would be a, a school employee type situation? Where would that, when would that happen?
I think there's another one that they're also referring to, because when a student is homeless, um, they, they are to be transported to their school of origin. So that if they were homeless and no longer able to walk through their school or take a bus to their regular school, and now they're in a different area, then the district is obligated to provide them transportation to their school of origin. So you wouldn't wanna take a whole bus to take that kid to school. You could do it in a, uh, another vehicle with an activity driver.
Okay. I seem to remember a specific situation in recent years where the family's home burned, and the family was forced to live in another community because that was the only housing they could find, but the children were still able to attend school in Silver Schools even though they lived outside the district. But it was because their home burned and they no longer had the residence. So it would be a situation maybe similar to that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Policy Advisory one thirty-two, EFC, free and reduced-priced food services. With the approval of Senate Bill three seventy-four, SB set three seventy-four, significant change in school food services will be necessary in each school. These changes are related to notice, student receipt of a school meal, non-discriminatory treatment, meal debt collection, and follow-up to assure eligibility in service. Three documents are effected by SB three seventy-four, policies EFC, EFDA, and tangentially Exhibit JF ABD-dash EA. Policy EFC was assuring completion of an application and provision of specific non-discrimination requirements. And there's references to, adhered to if a person would like to.
Questions or comments from the board, Ms. Fuskas?
Mr. Brown, is this the legislation that was introduced by Senator Michael Padilla?
Specifically, I couldn't answer that question, I don't know.
Okay. And so, um, even though they're good, there's, you know, I just heard about it like in the news. So, a, a, a student, there would still be paperwork that has to be done? It's not as though you just go through the line, whether you have money or not, and get a meal. There's paperwork that has to be done, is that what that means?
Apparently, three documents are required.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Thank you.
Policy Advisory one thirty-three, EFDA, collection of money, food tickets. EFDA was almost completely rewritten to incorporate the language of sections four and six of SB three seventy-four. The Senate bill ensures the receipt of a student meal for any student who requests one, outlines debt collection procedures, and places limits on collection of meal debt.
Questions or comments on Policy Advisory one thirty-three? Seeing that, we'll move on to Policy Advisory one-three-four, IKF, graduation requirements. The legislature modified the graduation requirements to allow for a course in computer science to satisfy one unit of either mathematics or science, but not both under specific circumstances. The change requires competency to be determined in the subject for which the unit is applied before allowing the substitution. IKF was modified to provide for this change in twenty-two dash thirteen dash one, point one, part L, NMSA, as determined by SB one-three-four, section one. This revision applies to students entering the ninth grade in the twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen school year. I think that's the end of that one, isn't, is that correct? Mr. Ponce?
Yes.
Any questions on Policy Advisory one-three-four? I wanna say this was one of them that the governor initially vetoed, and then that got overwritten, I think, vetoed.
I think you're right.
Um, moving on to Policy Advisory one-three-five, JFABDE-dash EA, admission of homeless students. A one-sentence addition to establish that homeless children receive free school meals are, and are appropriately coded in the accountability reporting system was added to Exhibit JFABD-dash EA. A dominantly federally required procurement docu, procedural document. The addition clarifies that free meals are to be provided to homeless children and requires steps to enter the information in the student-teacher accountability system as required by section three D of SB three-seven-four. Any questions on Policy Advisory one-three-five? Very well, I should've assigned maybe three policies for each board member to read. Maybe that would've been the best way to tackle this.
Sounds good. You take this one, and then we'll take the next one.
Policy Advisory one-three-six, give me this large policy. JGC, assignment of at-risk students to classes and programs. HB three oh-one and SB two-one-three have the same language and are intended to provide students who have experienced disruption in the education process assistance in academic and activity participation, receiving credits, and planning for graduation. Policy Services examination of these two bills, along with HB four eleven, found a common connection to be, quote, minimizing disruption of the student's education, unquote. The latter, HB four eleven, was more specific, specific by requiring the district to name a person to be the point of contact for students in foster care and students involved in juvenile, in the juvenile justice system. Policy Services chose to prepare a separate policy based on HB four eleven and the appointment of a point of contact person to encompass the activities and assurances required by these three bills. The definition for those students who are to receive the services indicated in HB three oh-one and SB two-one-three, with the exception of the homeless children, are largely some sub, what is that?
Subsumed?
Subsumed?
Subsumed.
Oh, subsumed.
Subsumed, within the definitions, for those students to receive services under four, HB four eleven. The students are defined in HB four eleven as those in foster care and involved in the juvenile justice system. For those reasons, policy, JGC assigns the person to be the point of contact to the duties and responsibilities found in each of these bills in order to minimize disruption to the student's education for those groups named therein. Though there may be some differences between student populations identified by the bills specified, it is Policy Services' position that, with few exceptions, the students encompassed by the language of these bills will fall into, quote, "students experiencing disruption in the education process," unquote, classification, and should be treated as such. The specifics of each bill are found referenced in JGC, first for HB four eleven, and then HB three oh-one and SB three, two-one-three for students experiencing disruption in the education process. Period. Any questions? Comments? Very well.
Yeah, would you repeat that, Mr. McMillan? I missed the middle sentence.
That one is a little bit complicated, and it's unfortunate, it looks like, I mean, for kind of a serious situation for maybe those students that are in the juvenile justice system. And policy is quite maybe convoluted and...
Dense.
Yeah, exactly.
So we have to provide, take them out and put them in classes, class programs of their own? Is that how we understand that?
Have, have a, a contact, a point of contact within the district as well? Ms. Mylum or Ms. McCain, any thoughts on?
This is coming from Essa, and we do have a point of contact. It's already been established, um, with, uh, someone from CYFD. And then I'm in contact here, and, uh, we also work with JPO. And I think that kind of relates to the program that Bianca alluded to last month, that they're doing with the students of, of trying to take them out of the high school setting, put them over there for a couple of weeks, and then take them back. So I think that's what this is tied to.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? I'll entertain another board member to read Policy Advisory one-three-seven.
Policy Advisory one-three-seven, JJIB, interscholastic sports. Senate Bill thirty-eight provides that the brain injury information form previously required by twenty-two dash thirteen dash thirty-one, NMSA, NMSA, be modified to establish that the signature confirms receipt of training in and an understanding of the brain injury information required to be provided to parents and students. Policy JJIB was modified to indicate the significance of the signatures. The changes are found in twenty-two dash thirteen dash thirty-one, NMSA, part E, as revised by Senate Bill thirty-eight.
All right, this one was the one that I was referring to with the youth leagues. I wasn't sure, um, that this was the change to include youth leagues. I wanna say that it was maybe a previous, uh, previous legislation that, that included the youth leagues. But previously, it used to be just the middle school and the high school students had to, um, provide a signature page in addition to their parents. Now they also include all the youth leagues, um, that use the school facilities. Any other comments or questions? Any other comments or questions?
Policy Advisory one thirty-eight, KF and KF dash EC, community use of school facilities. SB thirty-eight requires written confirmation of receipt and understanding of brain injury protocol training by parents and participants in non-scholastic youth activity held on school district property. This was added to the new statute twenty-two dash thirteen dash thirty-one point one, Part E, NMSA. A minor change was made to the legal reference of Policy KF showing the statutory change. As permitted by the statutory change, Exhibit KF dash EC, which is in the form that must be, which is the form that must be signed by the sponsors of non-scholastic sports using school property, was modified to indicate the sponsor's commitment to the requirements of the new statute. These requirements that are that coaches and participants receive training and information regarding brain injury. It is also required that parents or guardians provide signatures confirming that the participant has had the training and that the information has been received and understood before participation in any activity on school property. There you go.
There it is. The other piece they added to the scholastic side was, this year was, before it used to be a signature page just acknowledging the risks, the signs, and the symptoms of concussion. Now they actually, the students have to participate in training. So that's, was an addition this year for the high school and middle school students.
I can do one more.
I can't see that, so I can't participate, I'm afraid.
Uh-huh, sure. Policy Advisory one thirty-nine, GBK dash R, staff grievances. In a bullet, in Bullet five of the Regulation of Staff Grievances, a general statement to the effect that the resolution of agreements shall not be made public without agreement between the parties is posited, posited?
Posited.
Posited, huh. In discussion of this regulation with a client's attorney, Policy Services was reminded that any action on the part of the board must be accomplished in a legally called upon meeting unless it met the specific exemptions of the Open Meetings Act. Rarely would board action on a grievance meet the expectations of an Open Meetings Act, and there is no requirement that the district have a policy allowing staff to grieve policy or the application of policy. Policy Services therefore removed the sentence and replaced it with a statement allowing the district to keep records of the actions taken. This is a continuation. If the district has a negotiated agreement containing a grievance procedure, then this regulation will only apply to those not within the party's subject to the negotiated agreement grievance procedure. The reason for this is that a negotiated agreement is a contract between two parties, whereas a policy or procedure is a unilateral action by one party. Usually, the employer and is not enforceable on those parties to the conflicting contractual agreement unless the policy is a requirement of law. The Open Meeting Act is not included as relevant information since it is already a part of each district's policy manual and is available online when using the Policy Services portal and search engine at www.nmsba.org/policy. It is recommended that this regulation be made a part of each district's policy manual.
Questions on Policy Advisory one three nine?
Want to break this month?
On to Policy Advisory one four zero?
I think we only have four more.
I'll read it, Mr. McMillan.
Okay.
Policy Advisory one forty dash JLI, student safety. The twenty seventeen New Mexico Legislature passed, and the governor signed, House Bill seventy-five, limiting the use and restraint of the seclusion in schools and providing for parental notice, among other conditions. While restraint and seclusion are very different procedures, they are often addressed together for silver, several reasons, several reasons. One reason is that they have both resulted in injuries or deaths of students and injuries to staff members. Another reason is that restraint has often been used in school settings in order to move a student to a seclusion environment. A third reason is that they both involve restriction of a person's rights regarding seizure of persons and thus require special precautions. Finally, both are viewed and safety procedures for emergencies rather than procedures used routinely to change student behavior or as a disciplinary action. For those reasons, Policy Services choose not to classify the policy limited, limiting the use of restraint and seclusion under other areas such as student conduct or student discipline. Since the common use for the safety of the student, other, or property, Policy Services have chosen to place the policy under the category of student safety. Although it is common technique, restraint usually consists of physical restraint to prevent harm to self or others, followed by a period of seclusion for the individual who has restrained. HB seventy-five offers schools the option of not using restraint and seclusion or using the techniques and following specific conditions as outlined in the new statute, as yet not cited. Because of the common occurrence of misunderstandings among young people in schools, restraint is no doubt going to be called in, into use at some time to prevent harmful behavior. Most schools have considered this issue and instituted staff training for the use of these techniques. If a district has not done so, the limit, the new limitations and conditions will require training in the use of restraint techniques and greater attention to the use of restraint, seclusion, and record keeping. Many associate, many associate the use and restraint and seclusion with a special education and five oh four accommodations. Though there are many, though there are many B uses made in these programs of the technique, behavioral intervention plans, VIP, are usually based on positive interventions to descalate conflict. There are no hard and fast rules on what the VIP will contain, nor are there statutory or regulatory implications for the use of restraint that could be applied along with or instead of the New Mexico law cited in House Bill seventy-five. What Policy Services suggests is that the schools treat each instance of the use of restraint and/or seclusion in the same manner, whether it involves students receiving aids and services through special programs or those who are not. The new law differ, differentiates?
Differentiates.
Differentiates between behavioral management techniques that involve separation from a larger group for purposes of calming and the use of seclusion. House Bill seventy-five also discusses different forms of restraint. It will be important to bring these discussions into the training and use of restraint and seclusion in the schools in the future. Please note that the policy and the regulations and exhibits that are included are required if your district wishes to continue the use of restraint and/or seclusion as a practice in case of an emergency. Additionally, the district are required to prepare or add to a school plan to implement the policies and prepare methods of support and strategies for school employees to successfully reintegrate a student who has been restrained for scheduled, secluded back into the school or classroom environment. One last action, Policy Services have had in place for some time, an exhibit called Fifteen Principles of Restraint and Seclusion found at IHBC dash E. We are changing the exhibit location and making minor changes to the wording. It will now follow the recommended policy on restraint and seclusion. If you adopt our recommendations, you should remove the old exhibit when you receive the hard copy of the revised policy and procedures for JLI. There are some issues with Policy Advisory one thirty-four that you should be aware of. After sending out Advisory one thirty-four based on Senate Bill one thirty-four, Policy Services discovered that the legislative website listed SB one thirty-four as passed and signed, but that, this was disputed, and the issue is being taken to the courts to decide if the governor vetoed the bill. We suggest that the districts hold off on adopting Policy one thirty-four with suggest alternative mathematics credits for graduation until this issue is settled. Materials of a legal nature and support of this advisory may be found following the text of the policies below. If you have any questions or requests, call Policy Services at area code five oh five four six nine zero one nine three, or email Dr. Don Williams, Policy Services Director, This material is written for information only and is not intended as legal advice. Please consult your attorney for further explanation.
Thank you, Mr. Khan, Ms. Montenegro, Mr. Brown, for helping us get through those policies under their first reading. And I think Policy Advisory, I guess I should go back to Policy Advisory one forty, which was a student safety restraint and seclusion. Was there any questions, concerns, comments from the board on that? Comments from administration? I think, Mr. Brown, you mentioned there's some training, some individuals at particular schools that have training in that specific restraint and...
That is correct. We have Mr. Minus as well as Mr. Clifford Thompson. They are now certified to be trainers for our CPI, I believe is the name of the program.
So then I was going to mention Policy Advisory one three four. I think that was the one that was in reference to the graduation requirements, and I think maybe, I think the courts ruled that that veto was invalid, so then that that was going to be in effect, or that law was, that statute, that legislation would be law now. So that might be something that we visit with the attorney on, making sure that that's the case, but that's what I understand, that that veto was overridden. And so I think that legislation is now law, but maybe something that we should, we should check into just to make sure and then see if it's, can be applied in our, in our schools. That concludes all of the first reading of the policies. Any comments or questions from the board?
We'll be taking action on these at the next meeting, is that correct?
I believe we will be taking action on these next month, yes. Any other comments or concerns?
On Policy one forty, if they're not, since it's been vetoed by the governor, they're not wanting us to adopt it. Why did they even put it in there?
No, it wasn't one forty, it's one thirty-four.
Or one thirty-four.
One thirty-four. I think it's because the courts had, it was going through the court process because the governor had vetoed that legislation, and the legislature had questioned the veto being valid. And so then it went to, I guess, the court's...
Supreme Court.
Supreme Court for review, and I believe the Supreme Court said the governor's veto was invalid, so I believe those, it was that legislation and a couple other pieces of legislation that were vetoed that was invalidated.
There were eight or ten.
That's my understanding is...
That was in the news.
Okay.
You're right. I don't, you're right, Patrick. I don't think they, Policy Advisory would send these to us if they weren't required. I bet you these, we're receiving these as a result of legislative action.
Okay. And it was, at the, at the time, it was still kind of working through the court process, I think.
Okay. That makes sense.
Next on our agenda, number three, is Ms. Mylum with Associate Superintendent Updates.
I gave you an enrollment for the fortieth day. We're working on finalizing all of our submission of the data to the State Department. Gabby Walden, she's been working on her administrative degree, and so she's been working with me on trying to find out exactly where these kids, any of the kids that withdrew, where did they go? So if you look at the front page down at the bottom, you can see that thirty-four kids this year transferred to Cobre, twenty-six to Aldo, four to Calvary Christian, one to the Montessori, fifty-five to other New Mexico schools, fifty-six out of state, fifteen home school, twenty-three unknown. We consider them no-shows because they don't show up, we don't know what happened to them, we don't know if they went out of state or what, because we haven't requested any records for them. And so the total was two hundred and fourteen. So if you look at the backside of this, you'll see that down at the very bottom, our total for this, the fortieth day for this year is two thousand five eighty-two, whereas last year at this time, it was two thousand seven hundred thirty-five. So that's a decrease of a hundred and fifty-three students with a unit value of six thousand six hundred and sixty-four dollars each. That's one million nineteen thousand five hundred ninety-two dollars loss of revenue on our SEG. And if you look at the very bottom line, if you just compare this to where we were at, at the end of the last school year, it's a loss of only a hundred and thirty kids, which is a little bit smaller than if you looked at the forty-day. And this is really, if last month, it was nine hundred and something, so we've seen a little bit of a gain. So we're, you know, we're hopeful. We also have, we've done child find, and we have several kids that are going to be placed in pre-K in the next couple of weeks, and that's in our D level, the DD program. We're going to have a child find out at Cliff, I believe, and I can't remember what the date is, November or December, I can't remember. So there, there is, there's been a voice that there's a need out there to do a child find. So we've always had the ability for people to come in, we call it walk-in. Any person can come into the special ed office and have their child screened in, for pre-K. It doesn't have to be through child find, you don't have to, you know, have a certain period of time during the school year. It's any day of the year that you can take your child and have them screened. So we are working on trying to see if we can come up with something out at Cliff to make it easier for some of them that live out there. We've been in collective bargaining, we meet again on Monday to finalize one item. We are going to begin negotiations probably in January is what we're hoping to do. When we spoke to Katrina Bustillos and Mary Luis Sauceda the other day, that's what we were, we had agreed upon. So there's nothing else to say, so.
Questions from the board?
Yeah, Ms. Mylum, would you say again the transfer to box that you've got at the bottom? What timeframe is that? Is that fortieth day this year to fortieth day last year?
No. That would be the kids that, from the very last day of school this last year until now.
Okay.
We've lost two hundred and fourteen have transferred out of our district to somewhere else.
Got it.
And so you look at, we're down a hundred and fifty-three kids, but you have to consider that, that's the net, because we've had more kids come in.
So we've gained.
Yes, we've gained other kids from other, you know, we may have gotten kids in from Cobre, we may have gotten in some from Aldo, some from out of state. So we didn't, we didn't track those, we were only tracking the kids that left.
Got it. Got it. Got it. Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Thank you, Ms. Mylum. Next on our agenda is Ms. McCain.
I don't have anything.
Okay. And next on our agenda is Board of Education and the Finance Subcommittee Report.
Thank you. Let me get to my little page here with my notes. Mrs. Montenegro and I met yesterday with Mrs. Mylum and Mrs. Alvarez. And we always have a little sheet that has the synopsis. And what I came up with based on those figures, just to keep in mind, last year, we had our SEG was twenty-four million forty-eight thousand nine dollars. This year, our SEG is twenty-three million ninety-eight thousand nine hundred forty-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents. And so that was a difference of nine hundred forty-nine dollars, see, nine hundred ninety, I'm sorry, nine hundred forty-nine thousand fifty-nine dollars and seventy-two cents. That's how much less this year in SEG funding versus last year, based on declining enrollment and a lower TNE. So then when you look, it's kind of interesting to look at some things, though, because when you look at salaries and benefits, last year Silver Schools had budgeted twenty million nine hundred three thousand seventy-six dollars for salaries and benefits out of the operational. And this year, let me see where at, I'm trying to see where I added them up, okay? Then I came up to nineteen thousand nine hundred seventy-nine dollars, let's see, nineteen million nine hundred seventy-nine thousand seven hundred twenty-five dollars for a difference less this year than last year of nine hundred twenty-three thousand three hundred and fifty. So the amount of money we received in funding less this year is nine hundred forty-nine thousand. And the amount of money paying less this year, paying out this year for salaries and benefits, is nine hundred and twenty-three thousand three hundred and fifty. So very, very close. You still have, you're paying out less this year than you did last year. What's kind of interesting to note, though, however, is the amount of benefits that we're paying out this year for employees is greater than last year. Am I making sense to you guys? And so right now, year to date, we now have an unencumbered amount of one million five hundred thirty-nine thousand one hundred twenty-seven dollars, which is six point six six percent. Last month, that amount was two million one hundred thirty-five thousand one hundred and forty-three dollars, which was nine point two four percent. So our unencumbered balance is less than last, than last month. But keep in mind that this reflects the period from September one to September thirty. And so this is the first full month of payroll for the new school year, because staff starts getting paid on September fifth. So now it's reflected, so it's more stable, probably. I think one thing that we, that was very significant is your Title II funding, which this year is ninety-two thousand six hundred five dollars and thirty-eight cents. That has, the requirements for that have been changed. They could use that for salaries previously. This year, that cannot be used for salaries. It can only be used for professional development. That's a huge amount of money, over ninety-two thousand dollars, can only be used for professional development. So the staff, the staff had to move where people were getting paid out of, where staff members were getting paid out of into other line items, like operational or things like that. But that used, left a huge amount of money for professional development. And it, whatever is unused can be carried over. So I think that's what I saw that was most significant, this long explanation. But does it make sense where we are financially? I think, let's see, there was one little thing to, is I think we need to keep in mind, legal services, we budgeted fifty-five thousand dollars for this year for legal services. And even though it's early in the year, we've already used fourteen thousand dollars of it. And we have some encumbered to thirty-five thousand. So our legal services are, we're spending a little bit of money there in legal services.
Questions from the board?
Does that help you understand what I'm seeing there?
Yes, thank you.
One thing that is interesting, as you mentioned, salaries, if you just look at the salaries and the budgets individually, salaries have decreased this year, but benefits have increased.
Right. Our salaries, yeah, our salaries cost has decreased because we have fewer employees. We were overstaffed. And now it's coming more in line with our loss in enrollment. And now you can already see, we're already having another loss of enrollment totaling almost a million dollars. And this is for the period ending in September. So no telling what you're looking like for next year in having to adjust budget and staffing, if you're going to be overstaffed compared to your student enrollment.
And benefit costs continue to rise and...
Now, this year they had both insurance and retirement, right? Both insurance and retirement amounts?
Retirement didn't change, but insurance did change.
All right. Any other questions or comments on the Finance Committee? Next on our agenda is Board Comments, and I'll start off. First, I want to say that the region meeting that we had earlier this month, I believe, or our last region meeting out in Cliff, I think was hugely successful. I want to congratulate Mrs. Hernandez and administration here for spearheading that event out at Cliff. I also want to recognize Mr. Agnew and his choir did a performance. His kids did a performance, and I think that was outstanding. The food was outstanding. Want to recognize Lindy Williamson for the food and Mr. Spurgeon for being our host out there. I thought that was an outstanding event. And we had, I think, a good time out there as well. And I want to thank those folks out at Cliff and administration here for putting on a great event. Next, I want to recognize Secretary Grzowski for coming down and recognizing our straight A school for, I believe, two years in a row out at Jose Barrios. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend the event this last Friday. But I understand it. I think it was well-received out there by the, by the kids and staff. And so I want to recognize him for coming down and recognizing our successes here. Next, wanted to let the rest of the board know and the community know that I've met with Mr. Wahaq, Mr. Ward, Mr. Alex Brown from the city, Mr. Brown here to discuss. Initially, I had some concerns with emergency access to some of our facilities, one being the football field, but also Ben Altamorano Stadium. And my work as an athletic trainer, I'd had some concerns with emergency access. And, and that kind of led into some other issues potentially out at Ben Altamorano. And so we had a discussion with Ben Altamorano. How do issues out there, whether it be maintenance or capital expenditures, capital needs out there, how are they addressed? Is it the city? Is it the school district? So we, we kind of, I guess, kind of started that conversation from some questions about emergency access. And I think opened the lines of communication between the district and the city on how we can address some of those concerns specifically out at Ben Altamorano. And would like to potentially look at a survey of some of the key stakeholders that use Ben Altamorano, get some input from them. And then take those ideas and, or those suggestions, and put them together, summarize them, and then look at our agreement. And the term eludes me. It's not a, is it a joint powers agreement, I think? I think that's what it is.
MOU.
Or an MOU.
I think it's an MOU.
Look at that and see, because according to Mr. Alex Brown at the city, there's no, it's, it's pretty vague agreement that doesn't, doesn't define how capital expenditures or capital projects are addressed out there. So I think that would be, I think now it's, it's getting a few, a few years under its belt. And there's some, some things that need to be addressed out there. And, and so we've kind of opened that line of communication. And hopefully that will continue, identify some projects, get some input, and hopefully be able to work with the city in, in improving and providing a safe environment out there at Ben Altamorano. The last thing I want to mention is, I had read a report that was in the Albuquerque Journal about a think tank called Think New Mexico. And they did a study on improving public schools by real allocating dollars from administration to the classroom. And they gave a brief, I guess, article in the, in the journal on that. And so, of course, I wanted to know, I was like, where are Silver Schools? Where are Silver Schools? And so I asked for the, the complete study, so they sent me this earlier. And it's, and I'll, if you haven't already got it, I'll pass it around, share it with the board, administration. It's not a real heavy read like some of our policies. It's pretty simple. And...
So can you report on that, or somebody?
Tell us where we are.
It's not included in this.
Oh, it's not? It's a list of districts, but...
Well, I'll, I'll tell you what it does have in, in this part of the, the report, is it gives, I want to say the top fifteen and the, and the worst fifteen school districts. And we were in neither.
Well, good.
So we must be in the middle somewhere. So what I did was I contacted, here it is, the top fifteen, well, no, they did it by...
Because Texaco was way up there.
By reading and math scores. And, and they determined, I want to say, as a large school, Gadston was one school that was, I guess, where they felt was high-performing in, in allocation of funds. And a small school was Des Moines, I believe. But it was, it was an interesting article that, that spoke to allocation of funds. And, and New Mexico, although we, we talk about, we need to, more funding for education, they talk about, we need to also look at our allocation and how that spending is getting to the classroom or not getting to the classroom. So I wanted to share that. And I did speak with Think New Mexico, and they did send me the entire list. And it's on my email, and I'd have to look on my email to see when we came out.
I can't go to sleep tonight until I know. You know me and numbers.
I'll look it up. And, and that's all my, my comments for now. Thank you. And enjoy for the, the students and staff. Enjoy the fall break that starts tomorrow, I believe. And get recharged for the, the last half of the fall. So that's my comments. Thank you all. And Ms. Vasquez, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much. I want to congratulate and thank the students, the families, the staff for great, getting off to a great year. Boy, everybody is so busy. All I hear about are the busy, busy things that everybody is doing. And it looks like they're having fun doing it too. So just congratulations to everybody. Thank you for the hard work.
Thank you, Ms. Montenegro.
Let's see, what can I talk about? I just want to commend administration, teachers, everyone that's just involved in the students' everyday lives. And especially those people that are really working hard to give the kids experiences, fun during the day, wanting to come to school. And it, and it spans from the elementaries all the way up to the high school. The man that came from New Mexico, my kids were just thrilled about it. And of course, you know, individual extensions were due. And I'm the only one at the office, and I forgot to even go, and I'm so disappointed. But my, my son could rattle off how many schools got As, and how many schools got two As in a row. And, and then, of course, his sister corrected him. So I'm not sure he had all of his information straight. But that was really exciting for them. At the high school, we did a powder puff game. And people have said, I think it was a guy that graduated probably five years ago. He asked his mom, why didn't they do that whenever we were here, Mom? And she's like, I don't know. And, and I was thinking, maybe I was the last time they donated. But they've done it off and on. But just things like that, that really helps the seniors to have memories. That helps, you know, kids that aren't in athletics, that can be a part of stuff like that and just be involved in the school. It's just been, it's just been awesome. One thing that has been brought to my attention, and, and I think we need to discuss, is that there's only one elective at the middle schools right now. And I know that we need to be really, it needs to be, you know, we need to be worried about test scores and stuff. But, you know, I see that as affecting our band program, which has already been affected. And it could affect our FFA program and stuff like that. And so, yes, we need to be really concerned about what's going on in the classroom. But I'm a, a huge advocate for the overall experience. And whatever that means to those students, whether, you know, whether it's band or whether it's athletics, or whether it's, whatever it is. You know, we need to do our best to make sure that everybody has those opportunities to be in, you know, more than one elective. I too, I didn't get this cool book. I'm going to have to get it. But I saw the, the ad in the Albuquerque Journal. I mentioned it, I think, to Frances, and I, and I sent her a copy of it. And it, it's just so interesting that, that schools that put more money in their classrooms and lesson administration are just doing better. I guess in Texaco. And I know that they're probably a very small district. I haven't even done my research to see how many kids they have. But I think it said they had a superintendent, a secretary, and a businessman, and a business, and a business office person. And I just thought, wow. And I, and I understand we're in a regulation nation, and there's just all these policies that we have to do and lots of work to do. But, you know, our number one goal has to be the kids and getting them the education that they deserve. So putting, and putting our money where our mouth is, so. Thanks. It's been fun. And we have our last girl soccer game coming up on Thursday. And I am going to keep it together for senior night, so.
Thank you. Mr. Khan?
I just want to congratulate the football team on, on beating Cobre last Friday night. That was a very good game. Nobody's mentioned it, so I thought I would mention it.
We left, we, we saved it for you.
I also want to, you know, commend Candy and Linda, Ms. Williamson, and everybody at Cliff for their warming hospitality on hosting our Region Eight. I think I was well deceived in seeing the kids, seeing in Mr. Agnew's class was very inspiring, just to see the work, what's going out, going in, out there. I also liked that Dr. Shepherd had his attendance and talked about the dual credit, dual crediting system in partnership with the high schools and, and at Western. And we do have a diamond on the roof in just letting our students know that, you know, that there are dual credits involved is very rewarding. And I know seeing graduation at OHS, there was a lot of students that did dual credit hours and almost graduating with their associate, associate's degree is awesome. I get overwhelmed because I want to say so much. My daughter was in cheer camp, and I noticed that there was parents one afternoon at a JV game. And I, it looks like the parents get together like a potluck. And then I don't know if the, after the football team, the, the players eat. And then they decorated the, the, one of the parents took me into the locker rooms. And they had, you know, their, their names with like a jersey that they painted. So it was just very inspiring to show the, our football players, you know, just looking forward to their, their hard work, what they do out there in the field representing our school. So I wanted, just to do a shout out to all the parents and, and their families and what a hard work they do supporting their children. Other than that, just, you know, want to wish everybody a good fall break. And fortunately, I can't have off from work, but... I can't have off from work, but my kids are very happy and, and, um, get ready for Monday, tell them.
Thank you, Mr. Wex.
Last month, uh, Ms. Vasquez noted that, um, for all of our schools that did not receive As on their report cards, that our achievement is quite high, um, and higher in many cases than schools that perhaps get a higher grade than any particular school. And I, um, found, and I don't know if anybody knows this, but Silver Schools had the highest achievement gains in English Language Arts in the entire state, and the second highest gains in math in the entire state of New Mexico, which I think is absolutely tremendous, and I can't commend our, our staff, uh, I couldn't be more proud of our staff, that is a, that is an enormous accomplishment, um, that I really think supersedes anything else. Um, so I've got that report that I will pass on, um, to the rest of my board members, 'cause I don't think that, uh, anybody knows about this, and I think it's something that we should really celebrate, I think it's tremendous.
Was that at School Digger? SchoolDigger.com?
Um, I don't know, it, it's a, it's a PED report that I just haven't had time to, like, thoroughly read through, I skipped to the, to the good part, yeah, but it's, it's a report that came from the Public Education Department, so I'll pass it on.
Would you mind repeating that to make sure that Ms. Steele got that information?
We had, we had, uh, yeah, I'd love to repeat it, we had the highest achievement gains in English Language Arts in the entire state of New Mexico, and the second highest in math. Um, now I'm gonna be terribly embarrassed if I, uh, I know, I know I didn't, I know I didn't misread this report, but I will pass it on so you can all verify, um, my understanding of what I saw. Um, and that's just outstanding, congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Wex, and I think you make a good point, um, you know, although, um, you know, we want to recognize those schools that, that, uh, did receive good grades, I think recognizing those, um, positive changes in achievement need to be rewarded as well, and, and as you mentioned, wouldn't be reflected as a whole on maybe a report card, but I think that's important to, to recognize and, and reward the hard work that's being done. So thank, thank you for that, and I look forward to that, that email, and I, I did e- forward the email to all the board members and administration on that, uh, um, spending, listing all the districts in, uh, New Mexico, how they are ranked, um, by the Think New Mexico, uh, report, so you can all scramble to your, your email and see what, where we landed. Um, next on our agenda is a limited public comment, and we have one request, uh, tonight for items limited to our agenda, and it's, uh, Mr. Steve Sines.
Um, on behalf of our SCEA president, Mrs. Katrina Bustillos, and our members, and with regard to action item six, uh, letter D, we respectfully request that instead of spending our limited public school dollars on hiring an attorney for collective bargaining purposes, we request that you spend those limited public school dollars on our students, and the many student programs and classrooms that are currently facing financial hardships. During these times, every dollar counts, and every dollar will make a difference in the lives of our students. Please vote in favor of our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is action items, and A is consent agenda approval of one budget finance purchasing, A through D, um, and number two, transportation, A through D. Ms. McCain, are you addressing all of those items, or...
I'm doing, um, one, A through D.
Thank you.
On our, um, the initial, and the total amount of checks written for September 2017, we had a total, um, amount of three million, four hundred and fifty-eight thousand, twelve dollars and seventy-six in expenditures for the district in September 2017 that we would like approved. And then we had, um, three budget adjustment requests, um, we had the, um, uh, Breakfast in the Elementary Program, and that, um, is directed at Harrison, um, Harrison Schmidt Elementary and Sixth Street Elementary, because they have a program that eats the kids after they're in the classroom. The total on that budget adjustment request is thirty-four thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars. And then, um, we were allocated by the, um, Capital Outlay Department, a new, um, they had a new go-bond billing, and, um, we were allocated twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars to be shared amongst our libraries here in the district. And then the final, um, budget adjustment request that we had was our fresh fruit and vegetable grant, and the, those funds were directed at Sixth Street Elementary, Stout Elementary, and Harrison Schmidt Elementary in the total of sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars. And for that, I'm asking your approval for those budget adjustments to, um, have these monies moved into our budget so that we can start spending them.
You said the fresh fruit and vegetables was Sixth Street Harrison and...
Stout.
And is there an explanation as to why hosted by...
I don't know what the application process is, I don't handle the application, so Cindy, um, Kendrick would have done that before she, um, retired.
Okay.
So I can find out exactly, you know, why the other schools are not participatory, you know.
Okay. And then, um, Mrs. Mylan mentioned that it might be that they don't have a high enough level of free and reduced qualified kids?
That could possibly impact it, I'm not sure.
Okay.
And with that knowledge, I don't want to speculate, but I will find out and let you know.
Thank you.
And that was monies received from, uh...
The Public Ed Department?
Public Ed. Any other questions, any other, um, information, Ms. McCain, from, on those? Um, so we've got, let me get organized here, one minute. Um, one, A, the financial reports, checks written, the budget adjustment request, we don't have any awards of bids or proposals or donations, correct?
Right.
Okay, thank you. Um, Ms. Mylan, will you cover two, A through D?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board, uh, we ask for approval tonight for two items. The first one is approval of the activity drivers for the seventeen, eighteen year, there are sixteen of them on there, um, though, that was for a training that we just had, she's going to be having another training, so we should have another set of them next board meeting. Um, also, on that same paper, you'll see over on the right-hand side, for the seventeen, eighteen school year, we only have one feeder route, and that, um, is in that amount of, she put the amount of three thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars and ten cents. And for those of you who don't know what feeder routes are, those are, uh, monies that we will pay a parent to bring their mileage, to bring their child from their home to the bus stop because of the, the location of their home, that's probably really, it's really out there far, and so there's no bus transportation, so we make an, an agreement with them that we will pick up their student, their child, at another location, and we pay them mileage, and they turn that in every month.
Just out of curiosity, what's the mileage reimbursement rate? Do you know?
It's forty-two cents? Is it forty? I think it was set at thirty-eight cents last year.
Thirty-eight cents, okay. Thirty-eight cents.
Because they, they release the transportation budget, that comes out of the transportation budget.
Thank you.
So that house is obviously in our district...
Yes.
Far from a bus stop, and not on any of those, those district waivers that we have with Lord's Burger.
Any other questions or comments on, uh, what we have under action item two, transportation bus drivers, activity drivers, and feeder routes?
Mr. President, it's not necessarily on this, you know, uh, when we went, when Mrs. McCain gave us the total amount of checks written, I should have made a comment or question. Um, you know, usually that's in like the two million and some, and it's three and a half million this time, which is a whole bunch, but during our, yeah, during our, um, financial meeting yesterday, I saw all these checks to CES, Cooperative Educational Services, that totaled well over a million dollars, I thought, what did they do? What did they buy from CES? 'Cause I usually think it's like speech therapy services or something, but what that spending was, was using some of the general obligation bond money, the, the funds that the, the community voted for, all those big, um, big projects like new roofs on the buildings, gym floors, the district is using Cooperative Education Services to, to get those services because they already have all of the contractors and vendors vetted, and you're getting the best price, so just, uh, I don't know if anybody else knows that three and a half million is way different than what we usually do, but I think it's because of that CES, it, the, some of the, a bunch about one and a half million of that is probably, uh, bond issue projects. Thank you.
Any other questions on the consent agenda? A, one, A, B, A and B, and two, transportation, A, B, C? There's no conflict of interest disclosures, correct?
No.
I'll entertain a, a motion on our consent agenda items.
So moved.
Got a motion, is that a motion to approve, Mr. Wex?
Yes, it is, thank you.
Got a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
We've got a second. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval of action items A, one, and two signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes unanimous, unanimously. Next on our agenda is individual action items, and item B is first consideration and approval of authorization to dispose of obsolete equipment.
So list of the items that are sitting at your area, can you, you, uh, receiving?
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm trying to do, is it? So I think everybody's got this, this list, is that correct?
Mm-hmm. There's, um, quite a few items on the list, um, this time around, because, you know, we have all the movement within the district and everything, and so we actually probably found a lot of stuff that people hadn't seen anymore when they moved stuff out of their classrooms, and, um, we're, we'll submit this to the state auditor for his approval once you have approved it, and then, uh, move forward with an auction that we hope to have sometime before the Christmas break.
Any questions from the board?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
So that auction gets advertised in the newspaper?
Yes.
Okay.
Same question.
Forty-one Silver High softball jerseys.
You know, those might be some state championships, they might be high dollar.
Any other questions or comments? Like, um, and when will that auction be? Is there a...
We have not set a date for it, we have to get the approval from the state auditor to go ahead, and then, once we get that done, we'll schedule it.
Uh, Mrs. McCain, people are looking really interested at that list, but aren't there rules about employees can't...
Employees cannot bid on...
How about school board members? I don't know about that.
I, I don't know about school members.
But employees cannot bid on that, correct?
But relatives of said people can.
And...
We want to get this stuff sold.
Does this list bef- bef- before it's compiled for auction, does it go to building administrators or anything to see if any of these items are needed within the district?
Yes, we actually had a lot of the items out at, um, Stout, um, they were set out for all, for people to come and look and, and just put, take bids on them, and so this list is probably half as long as it was before we...
So it's, it's what's left over after everybody's taken what they needed? Okay, great.
And the money, um, gained from this, does it go to operations?
Yes.
Okay. Very well, um, Ms. Vasquez, you can see if you can find somebody to, to bid for you on that nineteen fifty-four three-wheel forklift. Um, if there's no other questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion to approve individual action item B, consideration approval of authorization to dispose of obsolete equipment.
So moved.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of, uh, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes unanimously. Next on our list is, under individual action items, is C, consideration and approval of Silver High School Senior Field Trip. Any other questions, comments? Mr. Minus, any other comments from yourself?
Uh, just the main thing is, um, again, this is something for the kids, something that we can start doing, freshen you. The sooner that this can be voted on, the better, that way we can go ahead and let families as well as students know, you know, that they're very anxious since the beginning of year, uh, we've been working on something like this. If there's any questions at all as far as anything that's, you know, that you've thought of, please let me know now, um, but I sincerely do hope that we've voted in favor of it, that way we can set something forward. And again, the student code of conduct is open for interpretation, but just that way we can get the process of letting the kids know, uh, this is something that you can look forward to as well as start fundraising for.
Any other questions or comments? All right, I'll entertain a motion on individual action item C, consideration approval of the senior high school field trip.
Mr. President, I make, uh, can, um, I make, oh gosh, Patrick...
A motion?
A motion to approve the consideration and approval of the Silver High School Senior Field Trip.
We've got a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second, any further discussion? The only, I guess, concern I would have is that we do get the, um, document regarding the rules, um, I guess, uh, reviewed by the attorney, and make sure everything's clear there, and then, then I think, uh, you've outlined some pretty, I think, solid expectations of students and parents, and as long as that's communicated, uh, very well to, to those folks, uh, um, I'm, I'm in support of, and, uh, of the task that you've got before you.
Yes, sir. We will not pass that up until we go ahead and get that straightened out.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, we've got a motion to, and a second to pass, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I'm opposed.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Ms. Vasquez is opposed.
I just have reservations about the liability, um, I'm concerned about some of the rules about the discipline, if they're actually legal for all students, I cannot understand how we could deliver students to a location and then say, "Well, you misbehaved, we're no, no longer going to care for you or provide your transportation back," so I just don't agree with that. Thank you.
Very well, next on our, um, agenda under individual action items is D, consideration and approval of a legal contract service for a coll-... of a legal contract service for collective bargaining. And I believe every board member did get a service agreement and a resume from, or a letter from Deana Holcomb. Mr. Brown or any administration have any additional information on that? I know this is also an item under our executive session. And so I think what, I think might be fair to consider is that we have that discussion in an executive session and then maybe come out after executive session to vote on this individual action item.
Can we do that?
Comments from, from the board or administration or any other information on that?
That is what we would recommend for it, as from administration.
Other comments or concerns from the board?
Mr. President, I move that we table action on this item to allow administration sufficient time to put out a request for proposal for these services.
We have a motion to table this individual action item. Do we have a second?
Second.
We've got a motion to table individual action item D. Any discussion? Further discussion?
What is the RFP requirement if it went over?
I don't know, but if you're going to have, you're going to be using a contract service, I would feel more comfortable if there was an RFP. Our expenditures for legal services this year are already encumbered at thirty-five thousand dollars. And to utilize legal services for this type of task, I'm not that comfortable that we need legal services. I think that there are other individuals that provide this type of service that are not attorneys.
And the dollar amount is sixty thousand dollars.
For RFP?
I wouldn't anticipate this being a sixty thousand dollar contract would?
No, sir.
Is there any, any, I guess, guestimation on what that, what that amount might be for this type of service?
I would, it'd be just speculation, I cannot even begin to guess, but it shouldn't be anywhere near that. In discussion with the president, vice president of the union, it was agreed by both sides that the CBA needed to be revamped. And they were going to get their representative, and the district was going to get their own representative. So that's where this all stemmed from. And it's my understanding, Ms. Mylan, of course, knows better, but it's my understanding that Ms. Holcomb has been used in the past, and her hourly rate is cheaper than a lot of others. And so that is the reason why we believe that it would be more cost-effective to use someone like her that is familiar with the collective bargaining agreement. And we wouldn't have to go to a fresh, new law firm that would have to start from scratch in reviewing and understanding the collective bargaining agreement. So it would cut down on the costs, but yet it would take care of any of the legalities in the future. Now, I'm unclear on what we're doing. Are we discussing this in executive session or are we discussing this now?
Well, we had a motion to table, so we, and a second, so we have to take action on that, that motion.
So we're discussing that motion?
So we're discussing that, that motion to table now. And we will still have the discussion in executive session as well.
Okay, I have serious reservations about the need to bring in legal services. I'm very familiar with the collective bargaining agreement, having been part of that team for two years. It's a twenty-four-page document that is not overwhelming by any means. So I would like to know more specifics about what in particular needs to be cleaned up. I don't, I see the potential for a large expenditure here that I don't see as necessary as part of, as part of the bargaining process. Every year, language is revisited and cleaned up and changed. Both sides have an opportunity to do that. That's how, I don't understand why at this point we would need to pay an awful lot of money to a lawyer to come in and do what's, what's already being done internally. Seems like a very unnecessary expenditure, and particularly when we're talking about, you know, the potential loss of eight hundred thousand to a million dollars next year based on our student enrollment. I see it as one we just can't justify without understanding the district's, district's perspective on why this is a need. As far as a law firm starting from scratch, like I said, it's a twenty-four-page document. I spent an hour with it this morning and read it from beginning to end. It's not, it's not complicated. So I also have serious reservations about using Deana Holcomb as our attorney. I think that that sends a poor message to our union. So I have, I have reservations about this on every level. From administration's perspective, if I may, that is precisely the reason why we're going to executive session. We recommend it. And we recommend strongly not to table this item as something that we need to discuss and action be taken on tonight.
A question I have, and I'd expect Mr. Brown maybe to have the answer, being here for such a short time, but maybe Ms. Mylan or Ms. McCain could shed some light on it. When was the last time a attorney for the school district looked at this CBA? Or is that something that once the negotiation process is done, and it's done every year, every two years?
Year.
Every year? Is an attorney, does an attorney look at that, a school district attorney look at that document after that process is complete? Or can you, can you provide any information on that?
Since I've been here, I would, we've had it reviewed, I can think of three times by attorneys in the twelve years that I've been here.
Can you recall the last time that we've had that?
Yeah, probably the ten-eleven school year.
Oh, okay.
And if you would help me understand what this process would even look like if, what is it that the attorney would be doing? What service would they be providing? These are items we would discuss in executive session.
Right, I would feel more comfortable discussing in the executive session.
Okay.
And then for, for me, I would feel comfortable going into the executive, executive session so I can make my decision.
But it's, it's a motion to table, so.
Yeah.
Mr. Brown said that Deana Holcomb has had a history in this district before, and she's familiar with the document. She's not the only professional in the history of several schools who's been employed to work with that document. There have been, there has been at least one other person whose professional services, who was not an attorney.
And did I understand correctly that we can't send something out to RFP unless it's sixty thousand dollars? Or that we don't have to?
It's the requirement.
Okay, you have to, but you can, under?
Yeah, you have the alternative of going for three quotes, anywhere from twenty, twenty thousand and one cent to sixty thousand, or you can do the RFP if you choose to. Because the RFP is more, if you're not looking for a price, you're looking for them to meet your services, what you're, the item, the service or items that you're purchasing are very specific. And so you're looking more at not the price, but at meeting the needs of your requirements.
Okay.
That's what an RFP accomplishes.
Right.
What if it's less than twenty?
If it's less than twenty thousand, it's considered a small purchase, and you don't have to go out for quota bid.
But if we wanted to, because our special service or something, is that, or no?
It doesn't limit you from doing it, it just specifies when you have to do it.
Okay.
And how much work is involved in that RFP process?
Well, whoever's requesting the RFP has to give the purchasing department their, what their requirements are going to be. Because, you know, you can't go to our purchasing agent and say, you know, hey, we need an RFP for legal services for collective bargaining. You have to be pretty specific in what you're, what you're looking for. And then they build the RFP that then is then submitted across, you know, and to different areas that specialize in that, and then people can respond to that RFP.
Any other discussion, questions, or comments from the board? Any other information from administration? No, sir. We've got a motion to, the motion to table this action item before us. All those in favor of tabling individual action item D, consideration and approval of legal contract service for collective bargaining signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We have all those opposed?
Aye.
So we have three opposed and two for, so that motion fails. And as I mentioned previously, I think we can go into executive session and then come back out and, and act on this, this action item at that time. And I don't know that we need a motion, I don't think we need a motion to do that, but. So I think we'll move on to our next item on our agenda, which is future meetings and proposed agenda items. A is the next scheduled regular meeting is November twenty-first. And we did check with our calendar, and that does not interfere with our Thanksgiving break, I believe. So we should be good there. Same with our next scheduled work session would be the twenty-first of November. The annual convention, which Ms. Hernandez sent out an email just this week, is December one and two in Albuquerque. So we need to get, those individuals are going to be able to attend that or want to attend that, need to RSVP quickly on that. And I won't be able to attend, I'll be at another function. Then there's the twenty-eighteen Board Institute, it's February eighth through the tenth. I want to say that's during the legislative session, maybe. But it's just a thirty-day session, so I'm not sure on that. The next meeting is the twenty-eighteen School Law Conference, June eighth and ninth in Albuquerque, twenty-eighteen, and then the National School Board Annual Conference, April seventh in San Antonio. Next on our agenda is open public comments. Do we have any submissions for those? So next on our agenda is executive session, closed pursuant to ten-dash-fifteen-dash-one, H-two through H-nine, NMSA nineteen-seventy-eight, H-two, limited personnel staffing, limited personnel matters staffing, H-two, superintendent board relationship, H-five, legal contract service for collective bargaining, and H-seven, attorney-client privilege litigation reports. We need to have a roll call, I believe, to go into executive session?
Need a motion first.
Or a motion to go into executive session, and then a roll call?
Mr. President, I make a motion to go into executive session.
Got a motion to go into executive session? Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second, any discussion? Or actually, a roll, roll call? The time is eight-thirty-seven?
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Voskus?
Yes.
Mrs. Montenegro?
Yes.
Mr. Khan?
Yes.
And Mr. Wex?
Yes.
Very well, we will go into executive session. Thank you all. We'll go into.